Making sure you all can hear me.
That would be a yes.
Yes.
City council member, agency director, authority member Doris.
Present.
Molly.
Present.
Man.
Present.
Vice Mayor Chris.
Present.
Mayor Paris.
Here.
We have a call.
Okay, uh, who's doing the invocation tonight? Anybody?
Daryl. Father, we thank you right now. We ask God that you continue to give us wisdom, clarity, knowledge, how to manage through this pandemic. We thank you, God, for the lives that you have spared. We thank you for the uh, coming together of this nation and this country. We thank you, Lord, for what we're doing in this city. We pray right now that you continue to give us what we need, how to do, what to do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
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 Okay, city manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir. Mr. Mayor, I would like to add, uh, an emergency. One NB three, if possible, in regards to adopt a resolution in opposing the county's proposed extension of the order. I think we have to vote on, and it has to be a four-fifths vote because it's an emergency. And it, four of us have to vote for it, and then that's just to hear it.
So is there a motion?
So moved. I second that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You're gonna have to be a little more specific on an, on a motion that's not on the agenda. You can't just say, so moved.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we, uh, talk about adopting a resolution in opposition to the county's proposed extension of the order.
Would you, would you modify that to be that we will talk about making exceptions to the order rather than opposing it?
Absolutely. I'm just, I'm saying, I think, I would like to talk about it.
Sure.
Uh, and NB three.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second that.
City clerk, call the roll, please.
Before we call the roll, I'm, I would just like to add that this is pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act that allows an item to be added when it comes to the attention. I'm sorry?
I'm listening.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, Mr. Mayor.
I didn't say anything.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought someone said something. My apologies. Uh, when an item is brought to our attention after the posting of the agenda, we may add it to the agenda pursuant to the Brown Act by a four-fifths vote. This action is to add it to the agenda. If it passes by four-fifths vote, then it can be taken up for consideration.
Okay, uh, let's vote. City clerk, call the roll.
City council member Doris.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Man.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chris.
Yes.
Mayor Paris.
Yes. It passes you.
That was the motion to add it to the agenda.
Okay, so it's added to the agenda. We'll do it as NB three. Let's proceed with the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second that. On, oh, well, call the roll, please.
City council member Doris.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Man.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chris.
Yes.
Mayor Paris.
Yes, passes unanimously. It said calendar. Is there any items to be removed? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move we approve the consent calendar as currently comprised.
Is there a second?
Do we have any, do we have any communications on the consent calendar from the clerk?
No, we do not.
I second that.
Let's go. City clerk, call the roll, please.
City council member Doris.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Man.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chris.
Yes.
Mayor Paris.
Yes, passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing item number one. Public hearing is now open. We will hear the staff report regarding PH one from Jason Cottle, city manager. City clerk.
Mayor Paris, thank you. Council members.
Hey, we're gonna have to recess for about sixty seconds while I get my dog to go outside.
Lex, come here.
You hear it? Yep. Welcome to twenty twenty. All right. What are you laughing about? Don't you have a dog?
Yeah, that's why I'm at, I'm at the city right now.
Okay. Moving on. Uh, city council. Are there any emailed comments to PH one?
Uh, we do not have any email comments.
Okay, Jason, do you want to give the report?
Uh, if you would like me to, I will. If, uh, for time, it's, uh, it's, it, the, the, the quick version is it's a ten production, ten percent, ten percent reduction in LCE rates. As you guys know, we, we periodically change the rates based on market conditions. Um, this is a decrease from LCE's rate structure of ten percent. Uh, we anticipate coming in the near future, uh, because we anticipate market changes again. Be coming forward to you again in the two or three months with regard to another change.
Any comments? Hey, anytime you can reduce rates ten percent, somebody ought to have a comment. Good job, Jason.
Can we close the public hearing and then I'll comment?
Oh.
Not yet. We need to open the public phone lines for those wishing to speak, and the city clerk has an announcement on that.
Okay, city clerk.
At this time, the public, at this time, we at this time, the public phone lines are now open for those wishing to speak on public hearing item one. Any callers wanting to comment on public hearing item one, please press star six now, state your name, and then wait until you are called upon to comment. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. Please do not interrupt or talk over other speakers, the mayor or council members. Those who fail to adhere to these rules will be muted and or removed from the, the call. Thank you. Again, those waiting to speak on public hearing item one, please state your name now and then wait to be called upon.
Madam city clerk, is, are the lines open?
Yes, they just have to press star six to come in.
With that, it appears we have no public comment.
Fran Saraseras.
What?
I think we have Fran.
Announced yourself.
Who did?
Fran Saraseras.
Okay, Fran, what do you got to say for yourself?
Okay, well first, well, I wanna thank you. I wanna thank you, I wanna thank you for not increasing our choice energy rates. Plus keeping the city doors, doors open with essential services for our community. To this, to this, um, COVID nineteen pandemic, and I wanna thank you, the city. I wanna thank, I wanna thank all the city employees and all the people that are working on this and their families.
Thank you, Fran. Are there any other speakers? Help me out here, city clerk.
If there are any other speakers at this time, please state your name.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or a motion to adopt?
Yes, I'll, first of all, I want to, uh, commend the mayor for, you know, uh, leading the charge on, uh, reducing the rates for our citizens by ten percent. Uh, it's most important that we put money back into our citizens' hands. And, uh, it was, we did this. LCE has been very profitable. I want to thank the mayor, uh, for, uh, leading the charge and reducing the rates by ten percent. So with that, I'd like to adopt resolution two zero dash one four.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, city clerk, could you call the roll, please?
City council member Doris.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Man.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chris.
Yes.
Mayor Paris.
Yes, it passes unanimously. Moving on to new business item one, Operation Jump Start. We'll hear a staff report regarding NB one from Shenan Diao, assistant to the city manager. I want to hear this regardless of whether we got anybody.
Mayor Paris, city council, I'm pleased to present Operation Jump Start. This represents a collaboration between the cities of Lancaster and Palmdale to help reignite both cities' economies in the wake of COVID nineteen. So the program will provide five hundred dollar gift cards um, as rebates for new leases and purchases of vehicles at the Palmdale and Lancaster auto malls, as well as Antelope Valley Harley Davidson, as well as a two hundred and fifty dollar gift card for used vehicle purchases at the same businesses. So we've been collaborating hand in hand with the city of Palmdale on this, and I'd also like to thank the council, in particular Marv Christ, for your role in making this happen.
Any questions?
And Jason, I have one question. The appropriation is one point five million, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay. I have one question. How does this work? People who have a bike car, they bring, uh, invoice to the city hall, or how does it work?
Yes, um, customers will, uh, purchase that vehicle at one of the participating dealers, and then those dealers will provide a list of the, of the customers as well as their contact information to us here at city hall. We will then verify the purchase and make their gift card available to pick up at the MOA in downtown Lancaster.
Has it already started, or when is going to start?
Uh, we are pleased to be able to offer this starting May first. Uh, we understand that with the, a lot of the public understood that this was coming and, um, had made some purchases, and we wanted to go ahead and honor those.
All right, thank you.
Any public comment?
No public comments on NB one.
Okay, do we need a motion for this?
I'll move that we, uh, approve NB one A and B.
Second that.
Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
City council member Doris.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Man.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chris.
Yes.
Mayor Paris.
Yes, it passes unanimously. Oh, I forgot to announce the, uh, contest. Any citizen that catches any council member catching their face gets ten dollars.
It what? From who?
Huh? It'll come from Paris Cares.
Rex, you're gonna pay a lot of money.
Okay. Council agenda.
NB two.
Are there any emailed comments about CA one?
We need to do NB two and NB three, Mr. Mayor.
Well, how did I skip those?
We're offering a reward.
Okay, we did, we did NB one, right? Correct. All right, NB two. We'll hear the staff report. Mr. Durico. You know, just because we don't see you doesn't mean you get to get up and go to the bathroom. Is Mr. Durico in the house? Do we have any emailed comments regarding NB two? City clerk, that's your cue.
Yeah, no, um, email comments on NB two.
Okay, uh, that being the case, is there a motion in a second to approve NB two?
I'll move that we accept NB two, both one and two.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, uh, yeah, I think that's just the way I want to do it. Uh, okay, uh, madam clerk, if you could call the roll.
City council member Doris.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Man.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chris.
Yes.
Mayor Paris.
Yes, it passes unanimously.
And now we have added item NB three, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, what is NB three? Oh, that's what Marvin added.
That's, yes.
Correct.
Mr. Chris, it's all yours.
Today, the county, uh, said that they would be extending the, um, order to stay at home for an additional three months. Uh, I would like to put something together that, uh, shows that the North County, meaning, uh, Lancaster, Palmdale, and Santa Clarita, or one of them, and especially us, are opposed to the extension order, and that there's several things in the, uh, extension order that, uh, should not pertain to us, and that due to, um, the density of the Antelope Valley, um, that we are different than the rest of the LA basin and should be treated differently.
Well, they've been treating us differently since the time I was born.
Well, I, I, that's, I would agree with you a hundred percent, Mr. Mayor. That's, uh, they've been treating us. They shouldn't have any problem with treating us different with this and letting some of our businesses open up and, uh, let us test it for the rest of the system. But, but all the counties that are opening up, uh, the governor just opened up the majority of current county. Uh, I think we should follow suit and open up, and with the safety restrictions, the masks, the social distancing, and all the safety precautions, but let us start opening up. Any comments?
Yeah, my understanding as well is if I listen to the governor correct, that if we want, if a jurisdiction municipality wanted to move forward, and that they needed to put together a plan, uh, if they felt that they could meet or exceed the criteria, and I think that that's what we knew. We should go ahead and do that. Mayor, under, under your leadership, we were out in front of everybody with whether it was providing guidance from doctors, uh, preparing the hospitals, uh, making sure that we can handle overflow, uh, securing masks, uh, ventilators, I mean, so, uh, again, we, we were much more aggressive than our counterparts. And, and, and again, you can see it in our numbers. So I, I think that we need to proceed, submit our plan, and, uh, I think we need to begin to make our own decisions about, uh, three times. We've got the most business-friendly city in all of LA County. And I think that we need to be the frontrunner, and we need to take, take charge here.
How did, how did you get to COVID nineteen to business-friendly?
Because right now, under there.
Okay, you know, there is a logical connection. I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right.
And I think the financial devastation, uh, is, you know, when people talk about deaths, and I, and I get it, everybody's life is precious. But I think we've done a really great job. You, you, you set the tone, and I, I think it's time for us to, I support the, the recommendation that Vice Mayor Chris has made, and I, I think we need to move ahead.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I totally agree. I, I don't think that we should be, um, paired with any other city. I think each city should be able to evaluate um, what's going on in their city, especially with us, where we're located, the type of weather that we will have, the type of businesses that we have, like you said, um, uh, what Ken said, Rex has been in the forefront, and, uh, I just believe that it shouldn't be on my side's fit all right now. I, I believe that we have a local municipality for a reason, that we can govern and watch ourselves and see what's going on, and I have the utmost faith in us and our, our mayor that if things revert, then we can change. But to hold us back based off of somebody else, you know, LA is another whole monster by itself. We, we are our own city, and we should be able to govern and, and rule according to what's going on in our city. So I agree. I agree.
Anyone else?
I just, I think everybody said it all, but, um, it should be like our numbers, you know, going with the numbers. It's been pretty good. According to that.
All right. I'm okay with this. But I want a resolution from this council that we attend every funeral of COVID nineteen patients. One of us from this council will attend every, as if we're gonna own this. I wanna, who's talking?
We can hear you. I couldn't understand.
But eating back.
I think it's Jason, the authority, to not only quote.
How do I mute this thing? I think you said I got to mute it.
I think.
Okay, can you guys hear me? Shake your head, yes or no? All right, good. Thank you. You know, we are ahead of every city out there. We have fewer people dead than any city out there. And I understand how deafening it is from the people who are going bankrupt over this, this crisis. Uh, I, I mean, I, I've never been torn like this, and I'm sure you're being torn also. And you know, I'm, I'm very reluctant to do anything, uh, with the city to the south. I was, I've been incredibly disappointed with how they, they have responded to this crisis. I think that we would have had fewer deaths if they would have done the same measures we made as early as we made them. Due to our proximity, they had a severe impact on us. Uh, so I'm reluctant. And, and, you know, Jason, the city managers are gonna have to convince us that, that we have some benefit to doing it with them before I'm willing to do that. As to us reaching out to the county or even to the courts for that matter, to, to be treated differently, we have to have a different program. It's not enough just to say we're different. Yeah, everybody knows we're different, but what are we going to do different? And, and I think there's a lot of things we could do different. I want an ordinance that we will use social, the, the telephones to track infection. That when somebody, uh, gets tested and is tested positive, if we can use our IBM Watson, uh, capability to find out everybody they've been in contact with, we can alert them and have them quarantine themselves. We, we have to have a much more aggressive program if we're gonna open up more than everybody else. There's a reason our numbers are so low, and it is not because we are in the north end of the county. I, I think that, that, that's a mistake to assume that. Our numbers are lower because we quit shaking hands sooner. Our numbers are lower because we made people wear masks sooner. We, we took draconian measures to keep people alive, and we are, and we are reaping the, the rewards of that. Uh, so I, I totally want to do this, but I want to do it intelligently. I want to do it with a plan that is different. This is what we will do different to, to get our people open. I want, uh, I want the COVID nineteen group, medical group we have. I want to expand that. And I want the, the education that we're providing to everybody that does open. And, and the, and I don't want to call it inspections, but the guidance when we go in and see if they're doing it wrong, that we fix it. We can do this, but it's going to take a lot of effort and a lot of cooperation. And, and, and I can't have some asshole out there pulling his mask off, having a protest in the middle of this, because all of the, all of what we will have done will have come to naught if we allow that to happen. Am I, am I getting, Jason and the rest of you, am I getting clear what, what I'm expecting? If we go to the county and say this is the way we're gonna do it, and if you don't like it, well, because it may take that. I think we could do, put a program together, given the, the boundaries of our city, the size of our city, and the, I think we also have a much more community, um, I think a lot of people in Lancaster love Lancaster and identify with Lancaster, and I, and I'm seeing incredible things out there of, of the people coming together to do this. And, and so I guess what I'm saying, if we want to get real aggressive in, in how we monitor the program, I want to know benchmarks. We get this many people in the hospital, this is what happens. Yeah, I want it to be automatically triggered based upon ICU admissions and, and fatalities, that we, we immediately do that. And every time somebody dies from COVID nineteen in Lancaster, one of us will attend that funeral if they have vehicles. Everybody agree to that?
I do.
All right, because if we're gonna do this, we're going to own it. All right, we're going to see the families that, that are devastated by when, when this happens. Uh, so Ja- uh, Jason, put the team together. Let's have another conference call, and let's roll this thing out to the county. Uh, and insist, but at the very least, you know, we, we don't have to do any more than the governor, governor's plan if we're doing this. And I think, I think, uh, Scott Wilk and, uh, Lackey need to deliver it to the governor. I mean, the way they're doing it now is just a slow death. I mean, it really is. I mean, they gotta open it up eventually, and when they do, we're gonna be right back where we were, because nobody's grabbing it and, and saying, okay, these, this is the science behind it. I also think we should be reaching out to, to Google. We have connections there. We should, we should ask them to come in and help us with this. There has to be a way that we can do this as safely as possible. And, and then finally, I, I, I want a group educating the vulnerable population what they have to do different. Listen, if you're fat, you're at risk. We gotta tell people, we gotta put it in language everybody can understand. If you have diabetes, you're at risk. You can't act like everybody else does. You know, we, we, we have a country that is so convinced that discrimination can't happen. We are discriminating now. We are discriminating against disabilities in order to keep them alive. And then I'm also wanting to do something about the overreaction. I mean, I, I, my mother is in an assisted living, and she literally lives in, in, in solitary confinement. And, you know, we, we see pictures of the other people there. They're in misery. There, there has to be a way to do this that's more intelligent than, than confining people to solitary confinement and what. I mean, they're literally dying from the emotional stress of what's happening to them. I, I want us to get a lot more aggressive. I want us to get, I want to spin up those volunteers, and I want a plan that no other city in the world has put together, and I want to put it together in seven days. Can you do that, Jason? I can't hear you. Somebody muted you. How rude. Are you still muted? Hey, what's happening here? How are we gonna have the most technologically advanced plan in America when we can't figure out how to unmute this?
I couldn't even hear a noise.
Okay, are you guys unmuted now?
Yes. Can you hear me, Rex?
I can hear you. What about you, Daryl? You talking? No, Daryl, no, you're talking. All right, let's see what we can do here. Is it me? Do I have to do something to unmute everybody?
No, if you can hear me, Rex.
Okay, I can hear you.
Okay, Ken, can you hear me?
What about me? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I'm unmuted now.
No, you, we can hear you.
You guys were messing with me, weren't you?
I know. He said the organizer had muted me, so I, it was, you got the God button, Rex.
Jason, can you talk?
By now, everybody in the city oughta know, you shouldn't give me a button like that. All right, Jason, are you unmuted?
Jason.
No, he's still muted.
Jason, you are unmuted. You might have to do something on your end too.
Speak, Jason.
Jason, are you pouting?
Jason, just go to Adele's room, office.
Yeah, tell him to come to my office.
Yeah.
What about now?
Daryl, go get him.
Yeah, just.
Ken's out.
There you go. Jason, come to my office.
Okay, just look at Andrea, she's the, she's.
Anyways, yeah, we've, we've been in contact with Palmdale already as well as Santa Clarita. They have, they have the same concerns, not only being treated differently, but also having different numbers as well. It is absolutely the case, if you compare us to other counties from a numbers perspective, we are much lower. We do not have the same problems that they're facing in Southern California or LA specifically, in San Francisco or some of the other bigger cities. Counties to the north have taken out all of their additional restrictions and are just, just going back to the state. So we have an opportunity to tell the story. The question is whether the county is going to allow us to do that. And that's the real test, and that's what you mentioned earlier, is the real test is getting those decision makers who are putting these restrictions upon our citizens to change their minds. And we have to do that with facts, we have to do that with, you know, information, we have to do that with real data and make that happen.
Well, you know, I, I like our board of supervisors. I like all of them, well, I like four of them. Yeah, that Mark Ridley guy, but. That board of supervisors is a great board. They're intelligent people, they will listen, but we have to have a plan to show them. What they're not gonna do is be bullied into it because we don't like it or we wanna be different. We gotta have a viable plan that makes sense, that's supported by, by medical and, and technological research, that no, we can do this and this is what we wanna do. And, you know, public health would rather not deal with us than do, than, than fight with us. I mean, I'm reasonably sure of that, okay?
Absolutely.
We have a plan, right? That's the deal. Okay. So a motion, do we need a motion?
Yes, with that, I'll make the motion that we adopt a resolution in opposition to the county's proposed extension of the order.
I second that.
Good. City clerk, call the roll.
City council member Doris?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Man?
Okay, Ken, we can hear you.
That's an absolutely yes.
Okay, all right.
Vice Mayor Chris?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes, it passes unanimously. Okay, city staff's got a lot of work to do, they got seven days. But it, you got seven days to create a template for the world because right now the world is failing. But let's show them how to do it. Not that we know how to do it, but I'm confident we find the, the right answers to it. All right, moving on.
Mayor Paris. Mayor Paris.
What?
We have the city attorney, she is trying to come in and say something, she's trying to get her line unmuted.
Well, somebody unmute her.
I told you, told.
You know, you all gave me this button and why?
I voted not to give it to you. I did vote not to give it to you, I just want that to be known.
We had a debate earlier.
I can't imagine a more dumb thing to do than give.
I'd like to make a motion not to have Rex have them.
The all mute button cannot go to Rex, I agree.
Okay, I just unmuted everybody, I figured it out. You all unmuted now? You're messing with me, Marvin. Okay, city attorney, you should be able to talk now.
Oh.
Can we hear Jason? Jason, are you back?
Pick it up, hear something.
He's still muted. What did you do, Mr. Mayor? You took the voices from him.
Well, I've been trying to do that for 12 years.
I'd say something, it probably gives you trouble.
Everybody, what's the problem now?
I think it just said Jason, right?
I was still muted, so Allison is probably still muted too.
All right. Next council meeting, I will do this from city hall and we'll have a tech there to, to help me out. Do we still, let me call Allison.
Yes, we're still working with her on her end to see what's going on with her mic.
Rex, if this according CA1, I will say one thing that Allison has advised me on is that myself being a pastor and my church being affected by COVID, that it was, due to the appearance of the department, making sure that I'm, I'm not, you know, doing anything wrong, that they wanted me to sit out for the vote for this.
Well, what does God want you to do?
Yeah.
He wants me to preach the gospel and I'm gonna continue to preach the gospel. I wanna do it in a legal manner, but I wanna continue also to do Romans 13, which is try to abide by law, by instead, you know, be allowed by the citizens as much as possible.
All right, well, I don't, I don't know what to do about, I don't even see her on the list of people attending this thing. All right, you're sitting it out, let's, let's. Well, wait a minute, that, that's ridiculous. We're not voting on anything specific yet. We're not talking about the churches yet. You gotta sit out on that one, right? Have we voted on this, this last, this last thing?
Yes.
Okay, we're done with that? All right.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Can, can you guys hear Allison now? Go ahead and speak.
Sorry, everyone. Three, I need clarification. Resolution you want to, you, says, it says.
We can't hear. I can't hear.
I know the problem. She's a Newport, they got really slow cell phone service.
Right, I'll, I'll translate. She wants to get a more clarification on NB3, what we want. Is that correct, Allison? So.
Let me do the motion. I'm making a motion. The city EOC, prepare a plan in the next seven days that is aggressive, that has benchmarks in it so that if the death rate or the ICU admissions or, or, there's three things we wanna pay attention to. You wanna pay attention to mortality, ICU admissions and hospital admissions. I would like our end of, what do you call that guy?
Epidemiologist.
Yeah, I would like him to give us what those numbers are. As soon as they hit a number, lockdown gets tight, it gets tighter. So that we, so that we're not yo-yo, yo-yoing. I wanna, I wanna keep it within a range of what's acceptable. And I want, I want a, an aggressive plan regarding using social, social media, telephones, Google to track people that test positive so that we can alert everybody they've been in contact with so that we can have them isolate. Yes, I know, your privacy is going to be impinged upon. It's better to have some privacy impinged upon than face bankruptcy in a month. And so that's just how we're gonna do it as long as the courts allow us to. And since courts are not open, I'm not concerned of what the court's gonna do. Makes sense? You know, I know that makes Allison upset when I say, say things that are factual, but.
You okay with that, Allison? Okay, Mr. Mayor, she is saying that it's not the, what the original motion was, what we voted on. So that one is different. So that we would have to re-vote.
I know we gotta re-vote. Okay, is there a second to what I just put out there?
I'll second that.
And, and added to the motion, and you'll have to add your second to it, Ken, is that we will then approach the county and the state and ask for, for them to recognize that one size does not fit all when one city is willing to be more aggressive in, in dealing with opening. So will you add, will you second that part of the motion, Ken?
Yes, I did, I second that.
Okay, city clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Thank you, Allison.
City council member Doris?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Man?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chris?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes, passed us unanimously. Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was doing, but I didn't know we got a pass.
Now, council agenda. Any email comments?
Yes, we have one email comment for CA1. It is from Jean. And it states, hello, Mayor Paris. Even though the Lancaster United Methodist Church is on the front page of the May 10, 2020 AV Press and attached to the article concerning opening churches, we are not ready to be open for services. I am unable to tune in to tonight's city council meeting. However, I want you to know that we can easily hold on for two more months since we are recipients of the SBA PPP loan. We have been able to rehire the 10 workers we furloughed. The majority of our members are post 65 high-risk. We miss each other and we are continuing to check on everyone by phone. We are doing virtual Sunday service on Facebook and our website. It may not be wise for us to open and expose the population to the COVID-19 virus. So far, our funding is holding up because these members of our congregation are on fixed incomes. Meanwhile, our preschool is open and caring for essential workers, children. We are strictly following guidelines for sanitizing, spacing and exposure. We are also continuing to feed the homeless on Mondays and Thursdays by distributing carryout meals. We are holding committee and small group meetings on Zoom. Other churches may be in a different place, but it is built with our souls. We can prayerfully wait to open when it is safer for our congregation. That is the only comment I received on CA1.
I, I appreciate the concern. Okay, Marvin, did you wanna address it?
Yes, I just think that it's, it's not necessarily, some churches did not receive the PPE, but it's not about the money. It's about the people getting together. It's about, they can practice the social distancing, they can put the mask on, they can do everything a grocery store can do. We need to reopen our churches for the mental health of our citizens, not just for the money side of it. We can do, we can do or help them with the other side of it, but the churches need to reopen as soon as possible. That's my belief. That's why.
So I'm, I'm gonna recuse myself right now from it, you guys, I don't let y'all make the comment. Because of me being a pastor, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and recuse.
Mayor, I concur with what Vice Mayor Chris has said. I think there, there's a little bit more to life than the direction that historically we've taken the last couple of months. I truly believe that again, with a, with, with a good plan and I think with cooperation from the churches that have the ability to move forward. I mean, I, I definitely understand what was shared with us from the Methodist Church. I think, again, you know, if somebody wants to be more conservative, I think that obviously that's within their choice. And again, I think that there's a pathway to allow the congregations and the churches that are here in Lancaster, for them to be able to move forward with services. And so I'm for that.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to also, as a business owner, I've been watching my customers and growers. People are being very responsible and people are like taking their majors to stay, you know, on social distance and everything else. So I think it'll be okay. I agree with Marvin Chris that, you know, I think it's, it's gonna be all right if we do that. So I am, I'm with that too.
I, I don't think it's gonna be all right. I don't. I, I, I also recognize the necessity of it. I want our COVID team to develop a protocol for the safest way churches can hold services, Jason. And every church that is prepared to follow that, then I think we do whatever we can to get them open. And if that's through the county, the state, we, we make every effort to, to help them get open. I wanna really clear in whatever we do, I don't care if they are a church. If they fail to meet those protocols, I want that church closed until they do. Because there is no more dangerous place than a congregation of people that are not wearing masks, that are not following social distancing. If, if the pastor doesn't have a Plexiglas shield to protect him, him from spraying the room, then he has to wear a mask when he does the sermon. They, they're, they're gonna have some hurdles to, to, to jump through and I think most of them will do it. But the ones who don't, don't get a pass. We're not gonna do all of these efforts to save people's lives in the city and then have one, one pastor. Make it all for naught. I mean, it, it, it just takes one exposure. It doesn't matter if, if, you know, twenty-three hours, uh, and, and six days were perfect. If that one hour is not perfect, you know, it, it will spread. But again, you know, our concern has to be people over sixty, people who are overweight, people who have diabetes, people who have heart disease, people with comorbidities. If they protect that, that group by, you know, having stringent safety protocols or just not letting them attend, uh, physically, then I, you know, do we really, the sooner people get this and get past it, the better. It's not going away, you know, we need that herd immunity.
Mr. Mayor, you.
What?
Talked earlier in regards to taking the temperature also, so that would.
Has to be critical, critical. And, you know, it, it looks like the tests are, the testing is now more and more available. Perhaps what we should be doing is having people there at those churches because we have congreg- congregations coming in and somebody has a fever, let's test them. You know, let's make, I mean, not force it, but you know, let's make it available to them to test it. The, the other thing, uh, you know, while you're, in your spare time this week, uh, I would like to be talking to some public health people and some pastors about maybe using a couple churches as a, a test bed for this, where we actually track, we, we compare the lists of the congregation to the people admitted to the hospital. And let's, so that way we can see, is this working? You know, if thirty days into this, we see that there, that there's not a spike of churchgoers, then the rest of the nation's churches might be able to open up. You know, there, there's very little science on this, but we need to, we need to be able to show that if you do this, we're not seeing spikes. And then, you know, and I, I know that there's several pastors that would be willing to do that. Uh, I don't know that their congregations would be willing to do that. And I don't know if the emergency, uh, state of emergency allows us to, you know, invade the, the privacy like that, but let's find out. You know, the city attorney can help us. This is, you know, I, I just want the folks out there to recognize this is not over. It's just beginning. It is just beginning. It will take three years for this to get over. And so we have to find our way and still stay alive as an economy and a society and, and human beings. And it doesn't look like we're getting much help from federal, state and county governments. We're just not. And so I think we have to invent our own or, or discover our own path to take the city and then figure out a way that we can walk it. So we need to quadruple our efforts. Do we have the staff for that, Jason?
Um, yeah, we can, we can definitely do the analysis, put the protocols together and do those necessary things. As it relates to the authority to do it is going to be the question, is getting, make sure that, that county and the state, you know, allows us to do the things we're going to be doing. And that's going to be key.
Hey, what the heck, if I can open a vote center, I ought to be able to do this.
It's funny, it's funny when you make leadership decisions, notice you don't get too much.
What?
I said, you notice when you make leadership decision and it's responsible, you usually don't get backlash.
There, there's no winning this, there really isn't. You know, it could, could be worse, could have been the Middle Ages and we had to wear that thing that makes you look like a bird, you know? I mean, I mean, we do have some blessings here, right?
Daryl still wears that.
What? What?
It said, Daryl still wears that.
You know, Daryl's out of the room and Marvin's taking liberties.
Council meeting, remind people how bad it could have been. All right. Uh, that's what we're going to do then. Is, is that good with you, Marvin?
Uh, that's good. So do the resolution and, you know, we need to ask for public comment.
Uh, we can ask for public comment. I don't want to do a resolution until we have the plan seven days from now. And we can have another emergency meeting if you want.
I'm good with that. I'm good with that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can't we do the resolution, uh, in accordance with what it comes up with after they come up with the protocols?
We, we could, but we're going to have resistance from the county if we do. This way we can include them in the discussion before we do it. Right?
I, I think it's, it's mentally important for the citizens of Lancaster to know that their leadership is working towards reopening the churches.
Can, can, can we not? I know we can't talk to the, directly to the city attorney, can we not amend the resolution that it needs to.
Resolution that we're.
Actually can talk to the city attorney now.
Oh, cool. So could we not amend the resolution? So could we not amend the resolution to concur with your, our plans from seven days? So we're giving them assurance that. I, I, I can't see what the difference is. Obviously, we got to have a plan. Correct?
Um, yes, if you'd like to amend the resolution, you may, um, but I need to know how you want to amend it.
Okay, here's the resolution. I'm, we are directing the, the, uh, the E O C for the city of Lancaster and send it to have a plan to reopen the churches. Uh, which we will then, uh, do whatever we need to do to enact. Does that work for you, Marvin?
Religious organizations, right?
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, city clerk, call the roll.
Rex, we need public comment.
Oh, okay.
And are we adopting the resolution that's before you as part of the agenda?
I'm saying that again, I'm sorry, Allison.
Um, before you, as part of the agenda, is a resolution for your consideration. Um, is the motion including adoption of that resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, city clerk, call the roll, please.
City council member man?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chris?
Yes.
Mayor Pairs?
Yes, passes unanimously. Uh, the next council meeting, we need a, we need somebody to teach me how to do this. Oh, all right.
You need to go back and to, uh, explain Daryl's absence. He would, he abstained from this.
Okay, Daryl abstained because he, he's the pastor of a church and felt like he was conflicted as in the role of a pastor and all, and the role of a, a council member. And he can come back to the meeting now.
Also because the religious organization is his source of income and this resolution would impact his source of income.
Okay. Uh-oh. Daryl has left the building.
Did it pass?
Uh, yeah, it passed, except for your church.
It passed with council member Doris recusing.
All right, council reports. C R one.
Sanitation District. It is, uh, working with the council and, you know, it is my intention to ask the sanitation district to rebate, uh, those properties, uh, a portion of their taxes, uh, their businesses, the commercial properties, uh, based upon the flow of water. So if they weren't considered essential businesses, um, and they were affected by this, uh, it is my intention to ask the, uh, sanitation district to rebate that portion. And it could be quite sizable, it could be up to five or six thousand dollars, uh, for some of the major restaurants. And it's important that we do this because, uh, the sanitation district, uh, costs are based upon flow. And if you've been closed, you haven't been there and it hasn't, and it's, uh, they should rebate you a portion of that, uh, depending on how long that this stay-at-home order lasts. So, uh, that meeting will be Thursday. And it is a public meeting.
I don't think it has anything to do with the flow of water, Marvin.
I think it has to do a lot with the flow of water. It doesn't flow without water.
Okay. All right, uh, I think that's a great idea. I don't think we have to, to vote on it. Is there, uh, any email comments, city clerk?
No email comments on C R one.
Okay, uh, city, city manager, where are we on testing the, the sewage of the city for various, uh, like COVID nineteen, things of that nature?
Uh, we're working right now closely with sanitation district, that is, there is real science behind it. Um, so we're looking in different locations in the city to determine, um, what those are. So there is real science behind the fact that you can determine the level of COVID based on sewage. Um, and we're working closely with the sanitation to do that, actually get trained to take those samples and then send them to labs to test for them. So we're actively in the process now.
Okay, so I want to talk to our COVID medical team about using those numbers in relationship to broadening and tightening the lockdown or the stay-at-home or whatever you want to call it. Uh, the thing that makes people really upset. Right?
Yeah, if, if the science is there, then we'll use that as an opportunity. It's still, it's still working on it, but yes.
Okay, let's see. Now, once we get that in place, we can also use it for the flu down the road. And we can use it for, uh, uh, other epidemics as they develop. I mean, let's, let's put some energy into this. The science is already there. Marvin, uh, let sanitation district know what's expected of them.
I will do that.
Something they get to sit on for three years. Right? This is something I want in place within the next fourteen days if possible. All right?
We'll do that.
Uh, the, uh, you know, the, the upside of this, when this is over and we take the lessons we learn, we're going to be a much healthier city. We're going to have a much happier population. We're going, you know, the, there's a lot to be gained from this a, as long as we stay the course and then keep it in place once it happens. You know, just, let's, let's not lose sight of that. Okay, uh, board of directors, N L Valley Transit Authority, any report?
Um, several things, uh, A B T A is, uh, doing very well. We are a hundred percent electric as of now because our transit fleet is not operational right now, but we are going back into, um, that mode on the seventeenth. But we did receive a sizable sum from the CARES Act. Uh, the CARES Act did give A B Transit Authority forty-eight million dollars, uh, for its operational funds and, um, which was blocked by Metro and supported by SCAG. So our SCAG representative, uh, did nothing to help us. And we had to go to Washington D C to fight for the money, but that money, uh, we will receive it. And we will try to change our M O P from SCAG to, uh, a direct deposit with, uh, A B T A from now on. We have to have some type of authority to do it. Metro felt that they had the authority and, uh, the reasoning to take part of the money, which they did not. They received one point two billion dollars. So.
Who's our SCAG representative that tried to keep us from getting this money?
It is the mayor to the south.
But this is money that would go to A B T A and both cities are the beneficiaries of that money, right?
Uh, yes, sir.
As well as the county.
Sorry, what?
As well as the county, three entities are on the A B, A B T A board. So it's a J P A of three entities.
So what was the, what was, what was Mr. Hoffbauer's explanation for wanting to give this money back to the county or Metro?
I have not talked to Mr. Hoffbauer in regards to it. We just bypassed him, uh, but they would not give us a split letter. SCAG would not give us a split letter. His, he does have the, um, he is the SCAG representative for the Allo Valley. And it was a opportunity for Metro and SCAG to take part of that money that was due to the citizens of the Allo Valley and, uh, thankful Macy, uh, Nishanti, bought his connections in Washington, D C. They overrode the local jurisdiction for the F T A and that, uh, letter was rescinded and we will be receiving the money. But it was just, it was important to note that both SCAG and, uh, Metro tried to take the money.
Do we need a joint meeting with their council? I mean.
I don't have that much time.
Well, we're facing, we're facing the biggest challenges that we've ever had to face as a city. And, and I'm not feeling the love. For. I mean, I, 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 am I missing something? Am, is, is, am I wrong in this?
No, it's, it is the, it is a, uh, we in the Allo Valley, the representatives from the Allo Valley have been fighting for our share. The, the mayor to the south, uh, decided that, uh, he didn't think that our fair share, as evident, we also voted or tried to vote on the N C T C, uh, to move some money to fix the A B freeway. The A B. What, Ken?
I said, yes, the same nonsense.
Yeah, it was a hundred and ninety million dollars to fix the, uh, A B freeway and, you know, there's five, uh, clog spots. Uh, it would cost about two hundred, but we could fund the difference. But, uh, the hundred and ninety million went for the high-speed rail to Vegas instead. So that eighty-five thousand people that travel from the Allo Valley to Los Angeles area on a daily basis, uh, have to continue to do that because he felt it was more important for a train to Vegas.
That was a little self-serving, I think.
We got people dying in this community. We got businesses going bankrupt. We've got families that are, that are being just pulled apart because of all this and we need stronger leadership to the south. Figure out who that leadership is and then let's help them with this. I mean, I, I, I don't want to involve ourselves in the city of Palmdale's business. I don't want this cactus curtain stuff to be happening, but I can't have this continue. I can't have the mayor of Palmdale voting to give away forty-two million dollars in the middle of the biggest crisis we've ever faced as a community. I mean, this has got to get fixed. We, we can't have the mayor of Palmdale thinking it's okay to have protests without people wearing a mask, you know? So Marvin?
Okay.
What's this? I mean, you know what we have to do.
I will do my best.
All right. Thank you. All right, are there any, uh, emailed comments to C R two?
No email comments on C R two.
I bet there will be tomorrow. All right, uh, council reports, do we have any? Do we have any council reports?
We do have a council report from the ABA QMD. At the ABA QMD, we did, due to the COVID-19, that we allocated $75,000 to the fairgrounds to buy recording equipment, cameras and everything for different people in the community to borrow to use to help them throughout this so they can transmit. Part of the reasoning behind it is if we do not have a fair, we need to start looking towards how we're going to help the different people in the community, such as the Kiwanis Junior Livestock Auction. The Kiwanis Junior Livestock Auction might be held by a teleconference, and we'll go from there, that. But thanks to the help of Ken, Ken once sits on the board, and we were able to get the money for the Antelope Valley Fairgrounds to help the rest of the community, but the AB Fairgrounds will own the equipment.
So could we be doing virtual graduations at the fairgrounds with this equipment?
Yes.
Yes.
Have somebody reach out to the school districts to see if they need our assistance in any way with that. I don't want to abandon these kids, say, oh, well, you lost your senior year. I mean, we've got to make a bigger effort for this, at least for the people in Lancaster. So, Ken, you're not doing anything, all the restaurants are closed. Could you reach out to all of the Lancaster City High Schools and see what they need to do a virtual graduation?
We'll put our hat on and figure it out.
Okay, and that way, we don't have to ask anybody's permission for it. Paraclete came up with a plan for graduation with social distancing that I thought was perfect, and I'd like that submitted to the city attorney, and if they can do it, if we can figure out a way to legally allow them to do it, I want to do it. I don't want to tell these kids, this is the month of their life in many respects before they have to join the workforce and, you know, do what...
No workforce.
Yeah, there is no workforce, you're right.
Yeah, but I will, I'll take the effort to reach out to the high schools, and we'll put our brains to it and figure it out.
Okay, good. You all agree with that?
Yes.
We're not agendized for action.
And Marvin, once again, I thank God for you being in the city. You have performed magnificently.
I appreciate that.
The, you didn't let them steal that 40, how many million?
Forty-eight million.
Forty-eight million. Forty-eight million. Well, wait a minute, now that we rescued the 48 million, can't Lancaster keep it all?
It is, it belongs to the community where it shall remain.
There has to be some fairness in life eventually.
Yeah, think of all the programs that we've initiated on ABTA over the years, you know, seniors riding for free, students. I mean, we've done all these things that most cities don't do, most transit authorities don't do.
No, I know, it's been amazing, truly amazing.
Well, we're being copied, Mr. Mayor, we're being copied by the state of California is requesting because we let our students ride for free. They took that, and they're trying to make it into law that all students can ride the transportation for free in the state of California. But we have been doing that for the last two or three years. We let our seniors ride for free, we let our students ride for free, we let the veterans ride for free, we let the handicapped ride for free, so...
Why do we charge anybody?
Well, we do charge people, and they gladly pay it because we're cheaper than most. If you run things good and you have good management, you got to remember, we're making our money on the carbon credits.
Oh, that's right, I forgot, yeah.
We get paid for every mile those buses, wow, that was genius, okay.
Like I said, there's a big difference between our leadership and elsewhere.
That's true, that's true. All right, anything else? Anybody got anything else they want to say? Anything they want to do?
Actually, Marvin and I have actually been kind of working along the lines of also with the young people. Marvin and I had a meeting with a young man, and we're going to be adding some things. We started by reestablishing the, what was it, Marvin, the youth council?
Youth commission.
Youth commission, and, right, and a lot of the youth have been wanting to add their input to the COVID-19 that has impacted them, so it'll go right along with what Ken is talking about. We've got something else in the works, but we're going to wait until I approach you about it personally, and I think you'll like it, so I'm pretty sure you'll enjoy what's getting ready to be presented to you.
You know, Sean is an example of somebody that we really want to raise up and give them experience, and, you know, there's a difference between leadership and just, you know, 20 minutes of fame, and I think he is one of the ones that would be truly interested in learning about leadership. We need some young women to do that also, but let's, when you do that youth commission, do it with the idea that when these kids turn 30, we're expecting them to be a major contributing source to the community.
That's exactly what the vice mayor and I were talking about, making sure, and not to make it as a farm system, but in a sense, they've been trained, they've been seeing how the government works, and they're, you know, have a great mentorship, and they're ready to step in, so...
What about for the farm system?
It's a baseball terminology, and it's like they have Major League Baseball, they have A baseball, they have double-A baseball, they have triple-A baseball, and it's what we do with our commissions, and it's what, it's, I think, everybody here has come from a commission or a deputy mayor, so we have a great farm system. They learn what government's about, what you can do and what you can't do, and what you, more importantly, what you should do.
Right. I thought our philosophy was there was nothing we couldn't do, we just have to find a way to get away with it.
Well, our philosophy is don't tell me no, tell me how we can get it done.
All right, all right, Jason, staff, you got seven days. I want you to change the world again. Anything else? We all good? Okay, the next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 26.
We need to do public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Oh.
We need the city clerk's announcement and the city manager's announcements, if he has any.
Oh, see, I rely on my vice mayor to guide me through this, and he let me down. Okay, city manager, you got anything to say?
Yeah, just real quick, we gave them track of the numbers, the numbers remain very low. We keep an eye on that, the EOC is fully operational, we keep track of the things that are necessary in the community, obviously still answering a lot of calls. We're looking to the reopening, which was obviously a lot of the conversation tonight, working businesses through that reopening. We have our team that was originally identified to work on some of the funding resources early in the, early in the, we're now transitioning them to assist in understanding some of the rules that are coming up from the state and the county. So as those new rules came out today, our staff jumped on it right away to try to understand the differences between the state and the county, and what businesses we can open and how they open, so we're focused on that as being that conduit to the community. We're also launching, we talked a little bit about the schools and graduations, we also launched a partnership with the schools, and the kids that are graduating doing the valedictorian speeches on Channel 28, launching that into our programs, as well as a banner program for those graduates, as well as a whole lot of other cool things for the graduates, understanding that it's, their graduation ceremony was limited, let's see if we as a city can jump in and help them accomplish what they've got going on. But I can tell you again, we're fully operational from a construction management standpoint, building inspection, plant check, all those things, so we have a fully operational city staff ready to serve, willing to serve, and again, it's, you know, what's key to this, and we talked about economic development in the future, what we have going on, we've got millions of dollars being spent on roads, and we can't overlook that. I mean, that is, that is, those are jobs that are in our community, those are union jobs that are being constructed on a road system that's super important to us, so over the next coming months, you'll see a significant amount of roads, roads being put out there, sidewalks being improved. We have it slowed down as a city trying to move forward, doing what we have to do, at the same token, dealing with this emergency that we've been dealing with, so, you know, it is an honor to work with you guys and work with the city staff, so, you know, we don't have any events planned, so we can regroup that effort into doing and serving the businesses that we need to serve, so, you know, we look forward to it every day that our community and our staff is still very healthy and willing to move forward, so we appreciate it.
We have any COVID-19 in the city?
We have not had any confirmed positive cases, no.
Praise God, wow, that's wonderful.
Yeah, well, it's, again, we had that conversation from the standpoint of wearing masks and socially, being socially distant, is that that has an impact. When our guys are working out there in the field close together, you know, this mask and being cognitive of, you know, the hygiene and health and things of that nature, I think have, make a big difference in allowing them to happen. Now, that's not the same as we won someday, you know, our doctors still, or tell the story that there's two people that sort of, you know, went through the Spanish flu, those who had it and those who died, so, you know, it's not a matter of if, but probably when, but nonetheless, until we get a vaccine or therapies, it really is, our efforts of being, you know, using hygiene, social distancing and masks, it really helped our staff, and I preach that to them regularly, their safety is important, as well as temperature checks, being, staying home when you're sick, being cognizant of those things, so it's, we've been, we've got successes so far.
Okay, great.
Mayor Parris, I just wanted to request if I can work along with Ken Man with the high school graduation, so...
Say that again?
I would like to work along with Ken Man regarding our high school graduations, if I can...
Love that, Raj, you and I as a team.
All right, works.
Thank you.
Make it happen.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, good. Marvin, I'm turning the meeting over to you, and you can close it out, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Jason, you don't have anything else as far as the director?
Did I forget something or remind you?
No, just, that was it?
Oh, no, I'm good.
Yeah, then you're done. Okay, city clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, I received two email public comments. One came from Bruce Hamel, and it states, "Your honors, after living in this city during most of my adult life, it came as a great shock to me during our last election to suddenly learn that my Lancaster household has become a voting member of Kern County's 23rd Congressional District. It was also stunning to me to learn that the county of Los Angeles had failed to notify me of these electoral changes that first became approved by our courts in the year 2012. Sidebar, sidebar, until our most recent election, all prior ballots offered to me listed only CD25 candidates, so I have now filed a Freedom of Information Act request with Los Angeles County's own city clerk's office, seeking further information. Therefore, please accept this as my request that the city of Lancaster take an immediate interest in establishing itself as an interested party within our state's newest 2020 Citizens Redistricting Commission project, with an ultimate goal of helping to keep our local residents more informed about possible changes that may become made to their own voting statute than they have been to this point. Respectfully yours, Bruce Hamel."
Okay, I agree with Bruce, the difference between half of Lancaster is representative in the 25, the other half is in McCarthy's district, we need to make sure that Lancaster is represented. We have one congressman now, but after tonight, hopefully we'll have two congressmen, but it's always good to have one representative to go to. We should take a look at that, so, I know we're not agendized for it. And the next one?
The next one was from Fran Serra Sarris, and she wants to congratulate Ken Man, Daryl Doris, and Mayor Parris for winning in the election.
Thank you, Fran.
Thank you, Fran, hope we can see you soon.
Yes, yes, we miss you, yes.
Okay, is there anything else? Any other comments?
No, those are all the comments I received.
Any comments, Daryl?
No, none at all, I'm good.
Ken?
I think we're moving in the right direction.
Raj?
I'm good, thank you.
I just want to let everyone know, thank you very much for those resolutions today, and hopefully we'll let the citizens of Lancaster know their leadership is moving in the right direction, and we want to be heard, so we want to be heard, and it's not one size fits all, so with that being said, I'll close the meeting and we stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good to see you all.